Hey, good morning, Eastern Oregon and welcome to this April 22nd version of AM Live on EOA. Your connection to Eastern Oregon. We are glad that you are here this morning on this Tuesday morning. Here in just a little bit, we are going to have Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo with us. And you can always find all of our stuff at EOa.network. That takes you to a link tree where you can find the different places where our content is available. Glad that you're here with us today.
It's really a second Monday for you.
It is.
Like coming in on a, off a three day weekend.
Yeah, three day weekend. I was gone on Friday.
Oh, well, yeah.
Four day weekend. Yeah, it's like, yeah. So.
Doesn't get to happen very often, so may as well take a drink.
No, no, it doesn't. And it was really good. We went and saw Michaela and Chris over the weekend. It was actually kind of a dooley. We have some, we have some friend, a friend that was celebrating her 65th birthday. And it was a surprise birthday party. So we went over for that. And they're only about 30 minutes from Michaela.
When I get your age, I'm not going to birthday parties.
You're not?
No, I don't want to be reminded how old my, like by my friends, how old I am.
Yeah. Well, the thing right is that.
65, like no, I'm not going.
When you get old, when you get old, you gotta have a birthday party because that's like the only joy about getting old.
I don't need to be reminded.
Yeah. When I had my 60th, that's how I felt. It's like, man, we gotta, we gotta pull the stops on a party because I need something to cheer me up.
But didn't it remind you that, man, damn, I'm 10 years down the hill? I mean, if you think of the hill as 50, right?
No, you, we really don't need the metaphor. We don't need the.
You're like down, you're, you're on, you're on downhill skiing.
Yeah, if I had something to throw at you, I would, yeah. Yeah, no, I tell you, it is, I mean, you hear about me talking about this personally. It's like getting old is like, it is the brutal, I have some choice words for it, that just keeps coming. I mean, there is nothing you can do about it.
Nope.
So it's like, yeah, are you going to go down hating it or are you going to go down embracing it? And I still haven't decided.
It's the, it's like one of the few things that everybody experienced. It doesn't matter if you got money. It doesn't matter if you're smart. Doesn't matter if you're super talented. You're going to get old. It don't matter.
And then you see those people, like I was listening to a podcast this morning coming in, Gene Simmons, you know? He's 75.
Yeah.
And he's like, he is busier, he's the guy from Kiss. I know you know who he is. I'm telling them, yeah. It's like, yeah. So, I mean, he's 75 and he is, he's starting things. He's busier. I mean, you know, he's in a good place. I mean, he's got a name and money and he can do anything that he wants.
That doesn't hurt.
Yeah, but still he, he was driving himself, you know, to this, he happened to be late to this podcast. And so he driving himself and stuff. And so, yeah, so, I mean, there are those people that just choose to like.
Embrace it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. So anyhow, I don't know. I'm still, I'm still working too hard to embrace it. Yeah. I don't have enough money. I guess that's the measure for me. It's like, I don't have enough money to not work hard.
To retire?
Yeah.
You get social security this year?
Oh, thank you.
Wait, is that this year?
Again, I'm not answering that question. You could start drawing, you could start drawing social security like at 62 or something like that.
Oh, you can?
Yeah.
If you wait longer, do you get more?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm waiting.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think they want you to start drawing at like 67 now.
67?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
I thought the retirement was like around 65.
Well.
They're just going to add two years on every 10 years.
Well, and the reason, the reason they do that is to try and help balance the books a little bit. One is, is that people are healthier longer and part of it is, is that, you know, they're, if they can delay. Yeah, I mean, social security is in the hole and has been in the hole for a long time. And so by delaying it, they're spending.
I thought, I thought I read a thing that said the life expectancy for humans actually dropped a little bit in the last, like four or five years. Like it actually like.
Probably, I mean, you are like the internet guru.
I just Google a lot of things.
Yeah. I mean, that's probably true.
Yeah. I mean, well, just the way we do, what we do to ourselves.
Right. But when you compare our lifespan now to what it was 50 years ago, oh my goodness.
It's longer or shorter?
Much longer.
Is it? Oh, because of the advancements in.
Right, yeah.
Technology and medicine.
I mean, it like, I mean, if you look in like the frontier days.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
Like 40, 50 years old.
Yeah, somebody who lived in their, somebody who lived into their seventies was like somebody who lives in their nineties now.
Could you imagine how long we would live if we actually like didn't trash our bodies and you know what I mean? Didn't chew tobacco and drink coffee and.
Well, yeah, and you see some of those.
Yeah, those are the people that are 100.
Right. But it's so funny. You also see those 100 year old people and they're like, yeah, I've been smoking.
Three packs and pow, man.
What's the secret to life? The secret to life is to keep drinking every day.
Yeah, that's true.
Like, okay, that's not the formula for a lot of people.
People are the great, you know, the great question mark of how the heck does this happen, right?
Yeah. Funny.
Yeah.
Yep. Alrighty, we'll do sports.
Let's do it.
Alright.
AM Sports Report brought to you by Hobby Habit in LeGrand. With the good weather pretty much here, it's time to get down to Hobby Habit and check out their Frisbee Golf Selection. They just stocked it up for spring, 411 First Street in LeGrand Hobby Habit, just for the fun of it. ELU men's basketball coach Chris Kemp texted me last night. So this must be like, he must be pretty excited about this one. He let me know that the Mounties have now signed not only the 4A Player of the Year in Isaiah Jones from Baker, but last night they also signed the Oregon 5A Player of the Year in Cole Hammack out of Wilsonville. Both of them are point guards and Kemp says that he thinks both will be ready to play as freshmen. Kemp also said that you'll probably see two point guards in ELU's backcourt a lot this coming season with three point guards returning. So, so a total of five point guards on this roster next year for the Mounties. ELU softball won three out of four this weekend versus Bushnell on the road. The Mounties have already secured a spot in the CCC tournament, but, and mostly, I mean, the national tournament as well. They've won enough games, but they can win the conference and host the conference tournament with three wins this weekend versus number one Southern. I, I think they can beat them. Kylie Parsons has to pitch her best games. I mean, Ayla Davies is arguably the best pitcher in the league. Kylie's number two. She beat Casey Schmidt head to head twice. So I'm saying Kylie Parsons, she's undefeated. I, I mean, she's number two in the league. So it's going to be number one versus number two. Kylie's going to have to beat her twice this weekend. And then ELU is going to have to hit the ball. They're going to have to find a way to win that second game. Which the last couple of weeks we've kind of struggled with. They're, hopefully Kylie's 100% healthy because that raises the confidence level of these ladies. And they just play better when Kylie's out there, you know, and, and healthy. ELU baseball had their final home stand of the season this last weekend versus UBC. The Mounties won one out of four games and also paid tribute. Benny, slow those down a little bit for me. Would you slow those pictures down a little bit, please? Thank you. They paid tribute to their seniors. They go to College of Idaho this weekend to close out the year. And yeah, this ELU baseball team, I, I like where they're headed. No, they haven't won a lot of games. I think they've won 12 games this year. The best season since being back was 16 wins last year. They're not going to match that this year. They're not going to beat C of I four times this weekend. It's just not going to happen. But it's headed in the right direction. It's way better than it was two years, two years ago. Way better than it was three years ago, and I'm excited about it. I think they got a lot of good things on the horizon. LHS baseball swept Ontario last Friday, winning 15 to five and eight to four. They go to Pendleton for, on, on this Friday for a GOL doubleheader with the undefeated and league leading Bucks. Those games start at 2:00 PM. LHS softball hosted Ontario on Friday. They also paid tribute to their seniors. Benny, slow the pictures down just a little bit, please. Thank you. The girls stayed perfect at 17-0 with two 16-1 blowouts of their Tigers. Their big test, and I really think it is their first test of the season, will be this Friday as they head over to Pendleton to take on the, the. It's almost always LeGrand and Pendleton, or you know what I mean? Like outside of basketball, it's, oh, okay, the GOL, you know, like, I hate to say this, but it's kind of boring. It's LeGrand and Pendleton in, in every sport except for basketball and, and then you can throw Ontario in there in soccer. But as far as like competing, Ontario just isn't competing. Like I don't know what to say. Like they don't compete at any sport really, except for soccer. And, and it just hurts the GOL because, you know, those two wins don't count for anything. Because Ontario's three and 30 or three and 20, you know? So I don't know how, I guess it's just a lifelong problem for the GOL and for living in Eastern Oregon and playing at LeGrand is just going to. I like the old IMC a little bit better when LeGrand was at the highest level in Oregon, was in the IMC with Pendleton, Hermiston, and all four of the Central Oregon schools, but that's a lot of travel and that's expensive. And I don't know how, I mean, maybe cut LeGrand in half and make two schools or something. I don't know. It's just, it's just annoying that you can go to Ontario, beat them twice, not give up any runs and drop in the rankings. That has happened, trust me on that. And, and it's just, it's crazy to me. But this Friday, LeGrand Pendleton, this soft, this team's 17-0. And, and this is the toughest team that they're going to see all year on, on Friday. It's going to be really good games. I, I'm, I'm not going to get to go watch those. I'll probably watch them online, but they're, they are going to host Pendleton here too, at the end of the season. And that's going to be the games of the year in the GOL for sure. AM Sports Report brought to you by Hobby Habit, just for the fun of it.
Alright, thank you, man.
Yep.
Alright, let's take a look outside. It's pretty this morning.
Yeah.
Now, look at the trees, full bloom there. They're getting after it.
It's springtime.
Yeah. And then let's look at that weather graphic.
Well, how long do them trees take to get leaves on them? Why is it, did you see them?
The ones in the front are kind of bare. I don't know.
Huh.
So 58 today, 58, 31 tonight. And it looks like it's in the.
It's still dropping down to freezing at night.
Yep.
It's going to warm up tomorrow and Friday?
So it's funny, I was talking to, talking to one of a, I have a farmer friend who was talking to him last night. And we were talking about, he had planted some grass seed. And, but since, since it hadn't rained, the, the dirt itself had kind of had a hard crust to it. And so the grass, it couldn't get up through it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So what do you do then?
I don't know. I think you have to replant.
Oh, that sucks.
Yeah, because it, it, it starts to come up kind of like an ingrown hair does, you know, come up and then it.
Gets blocked.
Then it curls down and dies. Yeah. So anyhow. Just kind of the life of a farmer. That's something I don't want to do.
No.
Yeah.
No, it sucks.
Alright. Well, hey, one of our morning sponsors for the next couple of months is going to be CHD Developmental Disabilities. And we've done a series of videos and this is a video on being able to recognize vulnerable adults. Take a look at this real quick. So, hey, Chris, thanks for being a part of this conversation. And today's conversation is about vulnerable adults in Union County. Let's start with, first of all, how do we identify them?
So Oregon State statute has identified anyone that is 18 years of age or older that has an intellectual developmental disability, mental illness, or is over the age of 65 or with a physical disability as a vulnerable adult population.
One of the points of this conversation is to help people watch out for each other and to be aware if somebody might be being mistreated in some manner. How do we identify that and what do we do about it?
Anytime that you see or hear of something that, that makes you uncomfortable about a population that Center for Human Development works with, intellectual developmental disabilities, mental illness. It's always the, the right thing to do to place that call. Trained screeners like myself know how to start, know what to look for and what to go with. So if your guts telling you that something's not quite right, make that call.
What if I'm afraid of embarrassing somebody or I don't want to sound the alarm if there's not really a concern? What do you say to people who might be in that situation?
I always say, if you're not sure if you should make that call, then you definitely need to make the call. It's always better to be safe than sorry. It could be someone's health and safety at risk.
Tell us, who do we reach out to? What do we do?
So there are two numbers to get ahold of me. The first is the SAFE line, which is the Oregon screening line, and that's 855-503-SAFE. Or you can reach me directly to my desk at 541-962-8889.
Hey, thanks, Chris. And we'll be having more of these conversations.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you. We appreciate CHD sponsoring the morning show and giving us the opportunity to help them with their social media campaign on developmental disabilities and recognizing vulnerable adults and the kinds of things that we can do for them. So we're going to take a quick break and when we come back, we will be back with Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo. Alright, we're back. Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo. How are you, man?
I'm well. This is my first time on the new setup.
Yeah, good.
I don't get the, the.
You don't have to do the pivot thing as much.
No.
Yeah.
No, this is nice.
Thank you. Yep. How are you doing?
Good, good.
It's weird for me though, because I'm in a different spot on the TV now.
Yeah, we reversed.
That's everything is usually I could see the screen and see if I'm, if I'm doing this. And I'm like, yeah.
You need to help Cody with that. Cody's the worst.
Does he always?
Dude, he's the worst.
Back and forth.
It's like he's sleeping up here. He's like.
Well, and, and we thought about putting a, they call them a confidence monitor, a confidence monitor like for you, you know?
Oh, they actually have a name?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. But, but the problem is, is then, then sometimes people.
They'll just stare at that.
They get distracted by that. Yeah.
Like if I just did this?
They'll just, right, they'll just barely be handling it anyhow, you know? And then when they like, they see this, it's like, just freaks them out.
Well, like we were just talking about, I think we're all kind of addicted to screen a little bit.
Right.
Because I'm sitting over there and I'm watching the monitor and so I could watch you guys live, but I'm sitting here watching that, watching the screen doing, and there's that like half a second delay. I'm like, why am I, I'm like lip reading you guys. It's like.
When we're sitting here like this, I have four versions of it in front of me. I got the, the version that's like 10 seconds behind right here and then two up there, one down there.
Do you, you see yourself watching them more or?
Nah, I, well, I.
I mean, you're doing work.
That one because I'm looking straight at the camera. I don't look at this one hardly at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thankfully, I was worried about that too, because when you're looking down at this one, you look like you're looking at this one. When you're looking at that one, you look like you're looking at the camera.
See, this one here is like, if I had to take a drink of water, I'd wait to, wait for the, the camera to pan off me and then I could.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you can catch it out of the corner of your eye.
Exactly.
And you know if the camera's on you or not, for sure. Yep.
Oh, shoot, this is a full, okay. I gotta be careful about, I gotta be careful about my socks.
That's that camera over there.
Alright.
And then your camera's actually right here. And then there's a camera up there in the corner and then there's three of them right there.
So I gotta, yeah, before, when I was hidden, I could come in with a tie on and shorts.
Now, yeah, like now you have, yeah.
Yeah, now it's going to be seen.
Tighty whities if you wanted to back there.
Yeah, no, I, I better make sure.
COVID Zoom meetings.
Yeah, exactly. Ah, we still have those where people have their camera off and like, turn your camera on. Uh, you know, can't, can't do it, can't do it.
Yeah, it's funny. I, I mean, when I'm in those meetings, I'm the same way. It's like, I want to see people's faces. I want to know if they're engaged or not, you know? So.
Well, that's what I, we've talked about every, since then. I mean, yes, it's saved, like especially our travel expenses.
Right.
Instead of having to go to Salem as much, if it's informational, we could, we just do it via Zoom. Because before COVID, there was no, I didn't know what Zoom was.
Yeah.
None of us. I mean, I've heard about it.
Right, right.
But now it is, like, it's mandatory for a meeting. You have to have.
Yeah.
A Zoom option for people that are still on the couch, I guess. But yeah, productivity on those has seriously gone down.
Yeah.
And, yeah, because there's times, I, I mean, I'll be honest, there's times if it's just informational, it's something that, okay, kind of listening in. I'll do emails. I'll multitask.
A lot of people do.
Yeah.
You can't really multitask if you're sitting in the same room as the person though.
No, no, no.
I mean, you could, but you'd look like a man to get.
Yeah. No, if I'm running one of those Zoom meetings, I always try to be engaging and catch people off guard and. Hey, Commissioner Bo, you know, how's things in Harney? There'll be some stumbling. Ah, yes, yeah. Can you repeat the question, questioner? No, nope, not doing it. Hey, so basketball, we got the, the top 4A and top 5A?
Yeah.
That doesn't happen.
At ELU.
That's fantastic.
Yep. Yeah, the, the Player of the Year in both 4A and 5A.
That's exciting.
And where are they from?
Baker and Wilsonville.
That's awesome.
Isaiah Jones, who just won a state championship, two back to back with Baker. And then Cole, what's his last name? Cole Hammack, I believe, or.
Now, and, and were we, weren't we thinking that Isaiah was going to go somewhere else?
No, that's Rashawn.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Rashawn's going somewhere big. He's a year younger.
Okay.
Gotcha. And then our, our last home game for baseball.
Yeah, it was this last weekend.
It's so quick. When the weather's finally getting nice.
Yep.
That's one thing.
Senior day, it was nice. They, they won one out of four. We just, they just don't have the pitching that they, they took. They hit the ball fairly well, but you can't win if you give up 12 runs a game. I mean, nobody's going to win.
It's, it seems to be always our, our problem even before, you know, back in my days.
Yeah.
Like, we would lose, I mean, we lost to LC State that one time, 35-17.
That's crazy. Like, there's been some games like that this year.
Like we put up 17 runs against LC State. They're number one.
Doubled up.
Yes. I just like, we, we were going through their pitchers like no man's business.
Yeah.
And to score 17 runs and lose, it was just, it was rough. I remember that guy hit a homerun in the top of third inning. We went up 10, 10 to nothing. And I'm like, hey, I think we got, you know, because we, at that time, we had never beat them, like ever. They had like 65 games in a row. We hadn't won. And then I was like, we got these guys. And they hit two grand slams in one inning.
Oh, my goodness.
I was in the outfield and I did, I don't know how many wind sprints I was doing.
Yeah, this weekend, for, for instance, this weekend, okay, we, we gave up 26. 59 runs in four games.
Oh.
And you know what I mean? And we scored 23, we scored 30.
See, that's scoring 30, that's good off.
It's a good weekend, yeah. But you can't give up 59 and score 30 and win.
No, no, no.
We actually won one of the games 12 to 11. So you can imagine what the other ones were like, yeah. 19 to 3.
Nah, but I'm still hopeful.
Yeah, I am too. 100%. Things are on the up, up and up for sure.
Good.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Alright, so tell us what's going on in the commissioner world. Let's start, give us a fairgrounds update.
Yeah, well, we're halfway through the session. This is, it's just a grueling, that's, so we still have, I don't know, two, we almost May? Yeah, so we got two more months of session. I know. But at least it's down to, instead of 4,000 bills, we're down to 1,400. It's just, it is long, long. And I've been back and forth to Salem a couple of times. So on the fairgrounds, yeah, it's Halspool 25-27. Doing well, it's still alive. It's now in Joint Ways and Means. Last Friday, two Fridays ago, Joint Ways and Means was here at ELU. It was fantastic. The roadshow is, they do a really good job. I really, I'm really glad they do that. So for those of you who don't understand, instead of having to go to testify in Salem, Salem comes to you. And so they, they try to rotate areas every other year. Two years ago, it was down in Malheur. Two years ago, it was down in Malheur County. Then we had kind of COVID. And then, didn't have kind of COVID, we had COVID. And then my first, yeah, kind of, no, there was COVID.
Yeah.
And then when I, my first year, I remember it was at Blue Mountain Community College. So what happens is joint ways and means, senators and representatives, they kind of have the checkbook, kind of oversee the majority of the bills, the Christmas tree bill.
Yeah, right.
So that's a lot of capital construction, a lot of fiscally asked projects, anything that has a dollar amount to it, it goes to. And it's, I think there's 20 or so legislators on this, this, this ways and means. And I don't know when they started the roadshow, but they come out to five different areas and they do testimonies in your area. And it's, they, it's very difficult to hear everybody. They'll never, ever get through everybody. There's usually from 150 to 300 people signed up to testify. And we did, we're, we had the most that testified here at EOU. They were cranking them out. We, we got 60, 60 people out of, say, 250 got to testify. So you may not think that's a lot, that's, so a lot of people's voices got heard.
You think they were heard, though?
Oh, yeah. They, if you, if you look at their engagement, they're writing stuff down. They're, yeah, they, they're, they're here to listen and they do a very, very good job. I try to teach everybody on your testimonies, just try not to sit there and, and be reading and, and you, you need to be, you know, facts, numbers, you know, engaging. You need to be a little bit powerful and, and quick. Otherwise, they'll start, I mean, two minutes, you're like, ah, that's not much time. Well, you talk for two minutes straight and you're just reading.
Yeah.
You, like the old Law County Commissioner said, be done speaking by the time I'm done listening.
Right.
I love that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I testified and mine was 43 seconds long. Quick, fast to the point.
What did you testify about?
On House Bill 2527, the fairgrounds.
So, so briefly, kind of tell us, how did it get to be a House bill? It hasn't been a House bill in the past.
Yeah, it was, yeah, two years ago, it was 2360, 2365, 2635.
Okay.
And that died.
And that died. And so then you tried some other avenues? And, and now we're, so, I don't know, kind of give me the.
Yeah, so I've, we've always put it as a capital construction project.
Okay.
And that's one avenue. And so that's just an ask.
Right.
That's just a, hey, we need, we need some funding for a project.
Right.
And forms you got to fill out, you have to be sponsored by representative or senator. And I'm sorry, it's turned in by a representative or senator. And there's billions of dollars worth of asks. And so hopefully you don't get lost in the shuffle in there.
Right.
And we brought it up as a House bill two years ago, 20, 2635, I think. And never got a work session, never got a hearing, and so that died. But we were still as a capital construction project.
Okay.
So I like to just do as many ways as I possibly can. And I know some of the senators were telling me last time, don't do it as a House bill. We don't, just put it as capital construction. All right, well, I don't listen well. And so I said, I want every avenue I possibly can get. And having a House bill gives you advertising.
Right.
So it goes in front of senators and representatives that may have not, you know, a lot of them are new this year from our last election. And so a lot of them had never heard of my, I've heard, I've heard of the project out here. And so that, now that I had a, a hearing and a work session, now it's in capital construction. Now we're, we're, I want to go as far as I possibly can. Will we get the funding that way? Probably not. It'll probably be more like capital construction, but it's great advertising.
Yeah.
Everybody's going to hear about 2527. And I want to thank everybody out there that testified. It wasn't just people from Union County. We had Yumitilla County, Jefferson County, Moro County. We had a lot of people testifying for House Bill 2527, which is a little bit unheard of in, in this realm. Because your, people are fighting for a project that's not in their county.
Yeah, yeah.
You never, you never.
Why?
Well, they, a lot of people feel.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, other commissioners.
Oh, I'd be pissed if my commissioner was fighting for somebody else.
We have, we have nine representatives that have signed on to this bill.
What, I, I mean, is it because you best your back out of them?
Yeah. And, yeah, a lot of them are like, let's just shut Matt up. You know, he's been doing this for so long. But, but a lot of them are like, when I go to the Capitol and I'm making my rounds, number one thing, Matt, I thought this is already funded.
Yeah.
It's like, no.
So they're like.
And so they're like, how, and then the second thing is, how has this not been funded?
Right.
So they're, they're knowing, it's, it's so important. And they're like, if this was in my county, if this was in my district, this is, this is ridiculous that this has not.
Yeah.
Been funded yet. And so that's why we're getting a lot of support from other.
Got you.
Counties, other districts. And so, yeah, you're absolutely correct. But right now, I've been telling the Ways and Means and senators and reps, it's like, who is going to say, my pickleball courts weren't funded, but you gave money to the fairgrounds in Union County? No one's going to say it.
Nobody, yeah, no.
No, but if you, I want to talk to that person.
Yeah, you, you didn't put us in pickleball courts, but you let them have the bathrooms at their fairgrounds?
Yeah, and potable water.
Yeah. Or we, we ponied up a bunch of money for a sports team in Portland.
Yeah.
But we still haven't funded the fairgrounds, yeah.
Yeah, I, I followed that a little bit. I could see the return on investment on that one.
Right.
So there are, you know, I always talk about the wants and needs, and that's what capital construction, ways and means are, in my opinion. Wants over needs.
Right.
And I tell the senators, I say, hey, one day I may be coming, you know, testify in front of you for a want. But right now, we have a need.
Yeah.
And last year, during the short session, oh, we don't have much money, we don't, whatever. And I saw a third of the list were wants.
Yeah.
Third of the list. And, yeah, there were some needs. I was like, okay, yeah, I know that one, I know that project. I know, I keep track of monies that are going around our state. And, and some of them, I'm like, yeah, understandable, understandable. And then there's some where I'm just, what kind of favor was given on this one? What deal, what deal was made on that one?
Oh, man.
What, you know, who needs to get reelected in this one?
Unfortunately, that's the way it works.
Oh, yeah, no. And, and, yeah, all those levels going up.
It's crazy.
Even the federal, I mean, look at all the federal stuff going on right now. Who's scratching, who's back?
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying it's perfect. But right now, I'm a little frustrated that we have not been funded.
Yeah.
But.
But you feel better about it this time?
Yeah, well, with the, the House bill going as far as it is and having so much support.
Yeah.
Shoot, I had Senator David Brock Smith on the floor. We were on the Senate floor last Monday. He gave a shout out to the, and he's not supposed to. It was, it was, it was nice. I should, I got to post these on my social media. All the testimonies and that everyone has said nice things about the fairgrounds and.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people don't see that, the, no one watches the testimony on all this. And, you know, it's kind of our world to do that.
Yeah.
And I should probably start sharing more of that on, on social media.
Once, once the funding is in place, then how long will that take for that to be completed, that project? Any guess?
Yeah. Tim Topliff, the fairgrounds president right now, we just passed the deadline to get it done for fair this year.
Okay.
So we're looking literally months. I think as they said, the deadline was April 19th. If we would have started on April 19th, this project would have been completed before fair.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, so five, four, five months. So if we do get the funding, gavel drops in June, well, we could, depending on weather, we may be able to get done before snowfalls. But, you know, we're, we're tunneling under the Grand Ron River.
Right.
I can't wait to see that.
I wonder how far you have to go down before, you know what I mean?
I, there's a guy, there's a guy that does this. Yeah, so there's a guy, and so I'm.
I doubt he does it in a machine himself. He uses a roto router, bro.
Yeah, if I, if I tug the rope, pull, pull me out, yeah, no. No, but I'm excited to, you know, the, the fact that there's a guy that, oh, yeah, no, let, let me know, I'll come out and.
Yeah.
And we'll go under the Grand Ron River.
How interesting is that?
I'm sorry?
I said, how interesting is that?
Yeah, no.
They dig vertical wells sometimes. Sometimes they dig straight down for a while and then that way, too.
Man.
Depending upon what's going on up here.
I bet, yeah.
But the, the big cost is the pump station. Is that right? I mean, that's one of the big costs of the whole thing.
I think they're all pretty.
I was going to say drilling underneath a river probably costs a little bit of money.
That's probably going to be, the guy, the guy's just like, I just do this for fun.
13 bucks an hour.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, there's some stuff I put together from my garage and I'm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the techno, the machine, the, I don't know if it's a sleeve machi, I, I don't know.
I wonder how big of a, of a.
Of a pipe.
Well, we're gonna, I think we're gonna definitely. I think at least six inches. Because we want to put something in that we, that could probably help out that side of our county, like for future development.
Right.
Why put something in that only, okay, this is good for the fairgrounds, nothing else? We always got to look in the future. So why not go bigger the first time? And then, so we don't have to be like, okay, now we got to do another one.
Yeah.
So I think at least six, six inches. I, I'm not.
And is this, but it's both sewer and water.
So water, water is already over, water is already there. And that was put in, I, I couldn't tell you. It's a sewer going back. So when people are like, oh, we don't have water at all at our fairgrounds? No, we do. We do have two wells. They're not, one's on its last limb and the other one's for like irrigation and, and that. But when you have nowhere for that water to drain.
Right.
Then you got standing water. I mean, if you've been out there during the fair and they're watering the livestock and the things, and there's just standing water.
Right.
Because we have no, we have no sewer drain.
Yeah.
It goes nowhere.
It's called horizontal directional drilling.
Oh, that, yeah, I remember.
And that's how, that's what they'll do to.
So, so it just takes a.
Yeah.
Takes a ride at Albuquerque. Huh.
So maybe.
I'm sure they do that for oil and stuff, too. It's like, I've got nothing left, let's go right.
That's true, yeah. So it's common method used for large rivers and sensitive areas. All underground tunneling and pulling the pipe through.
So you think they're going to, it's going to be, and then?
I do.
Instead of just doing a.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think they shoot it because, well, maybe gravitational. I don't know how, how it would work. But the video that, that is on here right now, they're, they're pretty much straight down and then.
Hey, this may be a good, when they do it.
Yeah.
We go out and interview the guy. I want, I, I'm going to be like, hey, you call me because I want to see this. And I want to understand how, how this happens. And I kind of want to be on the other side when it pops up.
Yeah.
It also says sewer pipes under rivers are notorious for accident. You know what I mean? Like, obviously if that thing leaks or cracks, you're going to have turds in your river.
Oh, shoot, I hope not.
Yeah, no.
Well, they are, well, if we did it over the overpass, that was, that was our other fear, where, where safety, just putting it on there. Well, it's supposed to go over the overpass, like over 84 in the Grand Ron River.
Yeah.
But the safety of putting it up, just not good. And freezing in the wintertime, could you imagine like going, you know, it's 20 degrees and just water coming down on 84 right there and just, or poop and.
So it's going under, it's going under the freeway, too, then?
We already found a way to get under the freeway.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been working with ODOT on that one. We found, we found a spot and we just need to get under the Grand Ron.
Okay.
But once again, you don't want the frozen pipes burst and going into the Grand Ron River either.
Right.
That's not going to be.
No.
That's not going to be good.
All right, well, hey, let's switch topics. So talk to me, talk to me about reelection. And let me, let's, let's go back to, I don't know, kind of just lay some foundation, what the, you know, what was passed and the, the public passed a few years ago. And I don't know, kind of give me an overview and where you're at on that.
The term limits. Well, I definitely would like a, another term. Mostly due because of COVID.
Right.
COVID stole my first term.
Yeah.
You know, I had one year, you know, drinking from the, the hose. And then next year was, next three years was COVID. Then finally got out of it. And so I, I'm almost looking at this as like it's my first term. Because literally, that's all I did my first term was COVID.
Because, because public health was under me.
Me.
Yeah, was under your responsibility.
Correct.
Yeah.
So yeah, Carrie Brighidi, remember, oh boy.
Oh, yeah. We had lots of conversations.
The one person that I'd never thought I'd be talking with much, oh, I was on the phone with her every day, twice a day. Yeah. Numbers and how we, oh, how's the, oh my gosh, that was horrible.
Well, now that, so do you remember when term limits, when you were not a commissioner, when that came through? And how did you feel about it then as a citizen?
I wasn't in politics as much. I remember when that happened, there was a lot of talk about the federal level.
Right.
About term limits. Those were the buzzwords at the time.
Right.
And when it happened here, I was kind of, I'm like, I did not understood what a commissioner did or.
Right.
And then now being in that role, uh, yeah, longevity in this position is very, very helpful.
Helpful for?
Just relationships.
Right. No.
A hundred percent. And I, I talked a lot with the commissioner because we're only, I think there's only four counties that actually had, have term limits. There's not too many of them. And when people, a lot of other, my other commissioners are telling me, they're like, that is cra- how do you guys have term limits? And I was voted in and like, man, you guys gotta get rid of that. That's, that's the dumbest thing you've ever heard. And I was like, well, I wouldn't, I could understand it on certain levels. I mean, look at our president. Uh, oh, we've had some presidents that go more than two terms, but it's during wartime and what did Eisenhower go? Seven, eleven years?
I don't, well, Roosevelt.
Oh, Roosevelt. Sorry.
It's only consecutive, like for the president, right? You can only serve two terms consecutively, but then you can come back.
Well, they, they, during wartime, they, I think it was during World War Two, they had Roosevelt do a couple of extra years.
Well, yeah, right. He's.
So with that being said, but with that being said, never say never. You never know what's gonna happen.
Right.
You never know if there's gonna be a COVID. You never know if there's, you know, something else is gonna happen. You never know. And so, and then two terms, that is, in this world, that's nothing.
So help people understand the benefit to Union County of having a commissioner that serves longer than two terms. From the committees that you serve on and so.
Yes.
Because that, that's something that I don't think people understood when they voted for term limits.
So when I got in and we did our liaisons.
Yeah.
I, you know, Commissioner Anderson, I've said this before, he's really good natural resources and Commissioner Beverage, she already had two years in. So they already kind of, I knew what liaisons they were gonna have. So I kind of just took everything else. Did I know about mental health? You know, behavioral health or CHD or, you know, law enforcement, district attorneys, juvenile probation. No, nothing. So I had to learn all of that, still learning. I'm not gonna say I'm a master, I'm a lot better than I was. But the first couple of years, no, I mean, like I said, COVID didn't help at all. Me learning from Zoom calls and all that. But now I am, I could have a conversation with CHD. I can pick up the phone and hey, where are we at here? Where, you know, before, no idea. I get out and someone else is gonna have to learn all that unless we get somebody specifically for, that knows that liaison stuff. And who knows who's gonna get what? Every year we go back to the liaison list and we move around. The economic side of, you know, I'm business guy in economics. I'm really good at that. But now Commissioner Seaver has, has that, kind of Donna had it because I couldn't all of a sudden just put CHD, behavioral health, mental health, everything on him. And now he's got to learn all that when I know it.
Right.
And Kerry and Barb at CHD, they're gonna be like, I have to now teach Jake, when you're sitting over here, knowing what we just did yesterday.
Right.
And now Jake's got to learn, it's gonna take him two, three years to figure out what's going on. And so my liaisons are my liaisons now. There's no way I could give up community connection. There's no way I give up CHD. There's, I'm so in like, deep into everything now that how can I, how can I give it up?
Yeah. And so, and then there are also committees that you guys serve on at the state level. So the state influence that longevity gives you. Talk about that for a minute.
So I will say right now, uh, like every other year we have session. So right now, very, very important. We have to be in Salem. We have to be making our relationships, our contacts. I have, I, I don't even know how many cell phone numbers I have. I text senators, representatives. I have the, I have the governor's cell phone. In there. Do I use it? No, I'm not, not too often. I don't, wouldn't know what to say actually, but. Yeah, we haven't seen her. I haven't seen her in, I don't know how long. But those relationships you make are very, very important. Like they'll be on the floor and I will be texting. I texted Senator Bottom. He's, he had a really good testimony the other day and I'm like, man, you're, you're the man. He texts me right back. Thank you very much. Hey, by the way, I need your help on so and so and so and so. Those are the relationships that get stuff done.
Right.
A lot of people, they're not even going to remember your name until your second term.
Right.
So here in Union County, all right, so we have term limits. By the time it's your second term, they now are gonna remember your name. It's like, okay, I got four years.
Okay.
To get something done.
So.
That's not, that's not that much time.
Yeah. So the last time I was at, it's been a few, a couple of months, I've been at commissioner meeting, but the last time I was there, Union County had their attorney kind of look into the legality of the whole thing. Has he come back with an opinion or where's that at?
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah.
No, but in Douglas County, that kind of the same thing happened and they found it unconstitutional.
Yeah. And do you know, do you, do you recall, can you summarize why they found it unconstitutional?
Oh, boy, that's lawyer jargon. I, I'm not, I'm, I will say I'm not getting any better at that.
And it's funny is because it like I, 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 I sent an email to Baum and he, he sent me back this two-page thing of lawyer ease. And it's like, okay, that didn't help at all. But anyhow.
So the thing is, we've talked about this on the show before. I really wish things that go on the ballot were vetted prior than going on the ballot. It causes so much problems and money. When, when they're voted through, like a couple of years back when I was on the show, they voted, the West Side voted just all kind of crazy bills through.
Right.
And then it costs millions and millions of dollars to go through the courts afterwards. It's like, do that prior.
Right.
You know, Oregon, we always been, Oregon's kind of like the guinea pig because they, we'll put anything on the ballot and, and see if it sticks to the wall. Well, well, that's when you get all the, the, the stuff that, well, isn't constitutional. Well, find out before it even gets on the ballot. Quit wasting everyone's time.
Well, and it's the unintended consequences. It's like things pass and there's no state structure in order to even manage what just passed.
I guess my question would be like the unconstitutional argument.
Yeah.
Our, our president has a two-term limit. How is that not unconstitutional? I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand. Like what, what's the argument there? Like what's unconstitutional about it? It was voted for by the people regardless of anybody's opinion on it. Cause I don't care either way. I, I.
Well, I really wish I could have brought, uh, yeah, I'll bring that Douglas County in a couple of months.
Yeah.
And we could just, we could just read that and find out what the.
Cause I wonder what the difference is because, I mean, isn't there a term limit for presidents? Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and.
I think that's the only event that has a term limit.
I don't, I don't know enough. I can't.
Yeah, I could. There may, there may be some other, you know, Supreme Court. No, there's no term limits in Supreme Court. There's no term limits in the Congress. There's no term limits.
Yeah. There certainly needs to be some term limits in Congress sometimes. That would, that would really.
Well, the thing is, that's the frustrating, that's where all the frustration begins. Like, oh, so and so has been in there for 50 years. Time to get them out. Well, the thing is, is they live in a district that is either so red or so blue that they'll never, ever get out.
Right.
And that's the, the game. It's like, okay, I'm gonna move over here and I'm gonna have, be a career part, career politician.
Yeah.
And I believe what makes our country, the freest country is the fact that we get to vote.
Yeah.
And so we vote and yeah, so we'll see what our court says if it's deemed unconstitutional or not. Like I said, I, I still have a lot of work that I, I want to, I want to finish.
Yeah.
Respite Detox Center would like to see, we're working on that right now. This opioid funds.
So talk to us about that. What's going on?
So since the state got rid of the mental health, behavioral health, um, facilities, that's kind of like up to your, the counties now. As you know, that opioid drugs and, and we have issues here in our county and everywhere that these.
Not just opiate drugs.
No, no, shoot. Um, yeah, but I, I'm referring it to because we're using it as the, the opioid funds that were, were coming in. But yeah, you're correct. So what's happening is our law enforcement, we have people that are possibly on drugs, possibly a little unstable. And they're getting arrested and they're going in our jails. Is that the right place for them?
No.
Probably not. They're either going to our jails or they're going to our hospitals. So they're filling up our, and we need our hospitals to save our lives. And so the hospitalers are getting filled with these people that need special care. And that's what these respite detox centers do. So is the best place for them in jail? Uh, probably not. Is the best place for them in the hospital?
Criminal, yes. But.
Yeah. Are they doing criminal deeds because they are on drugs or is it because of the mental health? You can't tell because some of, it kind of overlaps. And boy, look at, look at this. I, seven years ago, there's no way I could talk this way about, about this. This is, this was not even, I, I never studied for it. I never, but look at the.
Right, right.
Now I'm actually sounding somewhat intelligent speaking about this. So anyway, uh, we were looking at, Baker's got a small facility, Umatilla's got a small facility. So we're looking at getting something here. Maybe it won't be here. Maybe we would like to see Baker grow a little bit and then we'll, and we'll be able to transport some of our people in our county to, to Baker for, for that help. But either way, we need more beds. We need more care for these individuals. And, and they'll take the, um, the burden off our jail and burden off our hospital.
Yeah, that, that place in Baker, uh, New Horizons, um, they take a lot of people from out of Baker and Union County.
I know.
Like 90% of their people are from outside of Baker.
So that's the thing with the funding, where you get the funding from. Wasco County is trying to do the same thing. And if you get certain funding from state or, then it almost becomes a state facility. And next thing you know, you're getting people from Multnomah County, Washington County, over there in Portland, and they're bringing them into your county.
Yeah, that, that's happening in.
Yes. We, in my opinion, we have, we have enough problem here. We do not need other, other counties' problems. Though, yes, I'd sure like to help everybody. But I'd like to have a facility where, you know, I hate to be selfish with this, but let's, let's help. I don't want, I don't have to turn people from Union County away if we get this facility because we are filled with other people, uh, from the, from across the state.
Right.
That don't, that don't have this facility.
Right. But on the other hand, to, to build a facility from scratch is an enormous task. Whereas if we could help fund like Baker City expanding their facility, that would make sense.
Correct. So.
Is that kind of the thought?
So right now we have a couple of locations. We're looking at, uh, we're, from going from scratch, it'll be $15 million. And I do believe that's getting the $15 million would probably be easier than getting the $2.5 million for the fairgrounds.
Isn't that funny?
Yeah. Well, it's.
I mean, it's a hot topic.
Yeah.
The fairgrounds ain't saving people's lives.
That is correct. So.
I hate to be.
No, no, that's, the thing is, it's, that's another need. And I know the governor has put 90 million aside for, for these centers. And that's where we're at. These, where we need to start looking back at, you know, I, I, I don't remember, I don't know if I was even here when they started getting rid of the state. What were they called? The state, uh, facilities, the hospitals, state hospitals. Yeah. When did they, didn't Pendleton have one and?
Uh, the one in Salem closed in 2001, I want to say.
Oh, okay.
Fairview closed in 2001 and then they, so there was just this flood of people with developmental disabilities in the Salem area that didn't have funding or a place to go.
Yeah. So now they're like, oh, maybe that wasn't the best idea. And now $90 million is going back in to more of these areas across our state.
I wonder if people could, so what happened after that? That was developmental disabilities more than mental health, although they kind of go hand in hand because of the way Oregon looks at it. A lot of people with, uh, mental health issues were getting developmental disability money. Because a lot of times they're so out of there that their IQ drops below 70. So you get, you, you end up qualifying for funding through developmental disabilities, even though you don't really have a developmental disability. I wonder if in, because in Oregon, they call it like the, the, the group how, group home boom, when all these places closed. Cause the, the money was in opening group homes. You know, I wonder if in Oregon, you could do that with like, with, with drug treatment places, like privatize it, like let people and, and try to get people investing money in like, hey, you, you know, like you can create jobs and make a little bit of money and treat these people.
See, that's the, ah, that's a good segue. So the problem we're having is we, we're having a tough time finding people to run these facilities.
Yeah. And the, the, yeah, because it's a, it's a major task.
You mean the caliber of people? Is that what?
Cal, no, just people in general.
Yeah.
So there's a lot that aren't making it like, I know Wasco County, they were ping ponging back and forth with the funding because they couldn't find anybody just to run the facility. They had the, they had the, the millions of dollars to create the facility, have the thing. And then it's like, okay, who's gonna, who's running it?
Got it.
And it was like, we couldn't find anybody.
Bud says, how many jobs would be created with a facility? Good jobs for the county. Who knows? I mean, you, it depends on the Baker House, well, Northwest, whatever that is over there, uh, New Horizons. They have, they employ quite a few people.
Oh, no.
I mean, I know quite a few people that work.
The thing is, is I don't think we're lacking jobs here in our community. We, we.
We need workers, bro.
That's our, like, I, I, I hear that, you know, rumors, Amazon's coming and they're, hey, we're bringing a hundred jobs. It's like, uh, who's gonna do it? Because we probably have five to 600 positions open here in Union County already. What we need is people to get back to work or people move in to start working.
Yeah, but there has to be, I hate to say it, there has to be an incentive to go back to work. People, if people are gonna get money for free and taken care of, they ain't gonna go to work. Why the hell, why the hell would you work if you could just skate by? Yeah. Like nobody's gonna.
So that back to, you know, boy, it's that, we, we always.
Yeah.
It always goes back to employment and.
So Amazon's coming?
I don't know. Where's that rumor out there? I hear all this. I mean, I hear we're gonna get an Arby's.
Oh, really? That, we have an Arby's.
Don't you remember that was the years, ah, we're gonna get an Arby's, we're gonna get an Arby's.
I mean, that just basically, I mean, him saying that hammered down, I mean, that, to me, that means Amazon's coming.
All right. It's, it's the rumors that we always hear.
It's the rumors. Yeah.
It's rumors. A hundred jobs. I mean, you hear, you hear, you hear all that stuff. I hear Pendleton's getting a Chipotle.
Hey, that's the politician way of saying something.
Well, it's funny. Yeah.
It's a rumor.
I don't know.
I've heard that rumor for a while. I've heard that rumor for a while.
Everybody's heard the rumor.
Yeah, but they told me like, yeah, but don't say anything until you hear from somebody else.
Yeah. As soon as you hear from somebody else, you're like, ah, it's a rumor.
If you take a drive out there, I mean, who else, who else has 80, 80 trucks and dump trucks and things? I'm just like, and put stuff together that quick?
Yeah.
I was like, was it a Jack in the Box?
Yeah, no.
Maybe it's not Amazon. Maybe Facebook. I don't know who, you know, it's somebody that's doing some stuff out there.
Well, and I've, and I've heard, I've heard that companies like Amazon, I mean, there could be 40 trucks in the lot and they still haven't publicly announced that it really is an Amazon, you know?
I don't know how that.
But it's like, you know, when Christine Jarski was the, uh, development director, economic development director, and the pet store was going in at the mall, you know, they were putting the sign up, but because of the non-disclosure agreement that she had signed, she's like, okay, you can read the sign, but I really can't tell you what that sign says because I'm under a non-disclosure.
Oh, yeah. They all have the, yeah. I could see, you know, Timothy Bishop has to do the same thing.
Yeah, of course.
I could see where it's like, hey, you know, there's a deal going on. You can't, you know, if things leak, then I, I, you know, something go awry or skew and you don't want to be in a lawsuit.
Yeah. But when you're, when you're moving, uh, you know, 10,000 yards of dirt, I don't know what that is.
Nothing to see here. Nothing's going on out there. Nothing's going on out there. I don't know. Yeah.
At least I thought it looked better if it was flat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
So, but no, but the point is, is we're still having troubles finding people to, to fill the jobs that we have.
Correct. And so say, great, we get.
In all facets of work.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. From hospital, the dishwashers, the, so, so if this is true and there's a hundred new positions going on Amazon, are people gonna get off the couch and be like, I'm gonna go take that job? Or are people going to be like, I'm leaving the trailer factory. I'm gonna leave Boise Cascade. Are they just going to steal employees from these other, other locations? Who's got the best, am I gonna get paid more and who's got the best benefits? And then now we're gonna be even in worse trouble.
Yeah. Why, why would I go grind, you know, 50 hours a week at the trailer factory and lose my bumness if I miss a day because I'm sick when I can go work at Amazon and make right around the same amount of money and get treated better?
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to say it like that, but.
I don't know. But so I remember back in the day, you'd hear like Tri-Cities opening up 500 new jobs and people here would be like, we're moving. And people used to get up to move when jobs were available. You know, I don't see that anymore. It's like, I just hear there's a whole bunch of jobs happening in Union County. I'm gonna, let's move to Union County.
No, no, nobody's.
Nobody's moving. Well, there's plenty of jobs in every other county.
Right. Yeah. But the thing that is unique for us is you sit in the valley, just look around. I mean, Tri-Cities doesn't have what we have.
Oh, no.
You know, and the.
Yeah, but Tri-Cities has things we don't have.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So it's like, every, every place has that.
Right.
You know, that thing. Yeah. Like, so I mean, it's, it's like, we're gonna be, I think the grand's always gonna be in that constant, you know, what is it? A hamster wheel?
No.
Yeah. You know, where you're just like trying to get people to come here to fill jobs and to, you know, stimulate the economy. But at the same time, we, I mean, we can't, you can see it in sports really well. The best athletes from the high school this coming year aren't staying here to go to EOU. They're leaving. You know what I mean? And, and so it's like, it's just, I think that's just how it is, man. I don't, I don't know how to change it and.
Man, we're not, I mean, we're not growing.
No. Haven't grown in 75 years.
No.
Okay. Anything, anything else you want to mention to us before we quit?
I'm sure I got a lot, but I, I don't know what time it is. Oh, shoot. It's nine o'clock. I got 9:30. So, no, I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Hey, thank you, man. Always the, the conversation when you're on the set is just, it just goes.
Yeah, time flies.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you for making the time for us this morning.
Of course.
Yeah, appreciate it. Want to get us out of here?
On this day, April 22nd, it's kind of a boring day in history. 1838, English steamship Sirius docks in New York City after crossing the Atlantic. And it's the first transatlantic steam passenger service. 1884, on this day, Thomas Stevens leaves San Francisco on the first bike trip around the world. What, how do you get across the ocean on a bike?
You, you still gotta, yeah, you still gotta get on a ship or something.
Two years and nine months is how long it took him. 1914, on this day, Babe Ruth's first professional game. And in this game, he was a pitcher only. It's a, um, six hit, six to zero win for Babe Ruth. 1991, oh, something else happened on this day. I, I just remembered this thinking Babe Ruth. 1915 on April 22nd, 1915, I believe. Yeah, 1915, the Yankees wore pinstripes for the first time ever. 1915 on this day. I, it just popped into my head. Check that out. Fact check me.
Wait, wait, were they the, the first pinstripes ever? Or was there another team?
I think it was the Yankees first time wearing pinstripes.
Okay. So pinstripes were a thing prior?
I think so.
I wonder, I wonder who invented the pinstripes?
I don't know. 1991 on this day, Johnny Carson announces he'll retire next year from the Tonight Show. The number one song on this day in America, 2005 Candy Shop by 50 Cent. And then the quote of the day comes from Napoleon Bonaparte, courage isn't having the strength to go on. It is going on when you don't have strength. One more time, courage isn't having the strength to go on. It's going on when you don't have strength. Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was April 22nd, 1915 was the first time they ever sported pinstripes. I mean, I could be wrong, but it was something to talk about if I.
It's a rumor.
Yeah. A politician.
That may be true. I don't know.
Like it may have, it may, may not have done it. Who knows?
All right. Well, hey, thank you, Matt.
Goodbye.
Always a pleasure. Thank you, guys. Uh, so on, uh, Thursday, uh, Brownning.
Oh, BMCC.
President of BMCC will be right here with us again. And so don't miss that. We'll see you soon.